Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to welcome you to PAS's first Meet the Candidates special discussion event. My name is Terry Holsmur and I will be your host and moderator for this event. In a few moments, you will meet three of the candidates who are running this year for Palo Alto City Council: Lydia Koo, Ed Lowing, and Greer Stone. It's not an easy decision to run for political office, but these three people truly stand out for their dedication, experience, and belief that residents come first. Because of the pandemic, we know that this year's campaign will be different. However, we should take comfort in knowing that we have Lydia and Ed and Greer willing to step forward and help lead our community in these very challenging times. These candidates need your help and PAS encourages you to support them in any way that you can. For example, having supporters who donate their time, help mail flyers, or simply put a lawn sign on their front yards is critically important. In that regard, we had the candidates' websites posted at the beginning of this event and we will post them again at the end of the event so you can find ways to support their campaigns. In starting this 90-minute event, we will give each candidate a few minutes to introduce themselves and speak directly to you on why they're running. Afterwards, we will have a question and answer period. At the end of the event, we will give each candidate a few minutes to summarize their goals and hopes for their campaign. Although we don't anticipate any technical issues for this event, we do ask for your patience should any occur. So let's begin. Our first candidate is Lydia Koo, who has been on our council for three and a half years and is running for reelection. Lydia?
Welcome, everybody. My name is Lydia Koo. When I ran in 2016, some of the issues that I mentioned that we will find as challenges, we share with the region as well. However, it is our role as the city council to establish some wise policies that will enhance and also sustain the charm and the livability of our community. Not only for now, but for the many generations that's going to come after us. At the time, some of the important policies in 2016 that I had mentioned and that I felt we must pursue in Palo Alto is that growth must not outpace our city's ability to keep up. And then there's the housing growth that must be moderate and carefully done so it isn't unplanned and goes out of hand like how office growth had taken place here in Palo Alto. We did have a lot of traffic issues where some parts of town was, a lot of the driveways were barricaded and many of the homeowners couldn't get out of their own driveway or even get back home again. So we need to address some of those problems. Also, one of the more important ones as well is for our community, we need to have needs for people who live in Palo Alto such as the retail, community-serving type of businesses. Then, of course, there is the city financial to have a stable financial outlook. I think that since I've been on councils, now three and a half years going into it, I think there are some issues that have been addressed by the COVID and so, you know, we can learn from that and I think that there's a lot of opportunity to do so from there. But also, I have found that the trust and the confidence, the transparency has deteriorated also. So I would like to work hard in order to make sure that we do have some of that brought back to our city government. Also, we still need to continue to build a community where it is for all and we need to have a balanced community. And by that, I mean that it's not just on the business side or the office growth, but it also has to be for some of the teachers, some of the construction, or some of the people who clean our house. They need to have a place in our community as well. So we need to look into that. We need to address inadequate parking. Right now, we have a lot of parking spaces, but as time goes on and the businesses return, are we going to have the same problems? So I think that with each business development, with each business use, we need to identify and be very careful about ensuring that there is sufficient parking for them. Then, there's also a very big factor now where we have state legislation, Sacramento, just trying to... I am sorry, my dog is... Stop it. My dog is being very unruly. We have to fight Sacramento's attempt to take away our local control over zoning and other basic discussions. A lot of matters are being streamlined by Sacramento's laws, new legislations and proposed legislations that will hamper the character and the livability of our city and that's something that we need to address. A lot of times, it is done in such a fast manner and in such an untransparent manner, especially now under the COVID situation and all of us sheltered at home. They're still continuing their business at Sacramento and it's in a very short timeframe. Lastly, we do have to retain our character and livability. There is a lot of new generations that's going to come to Palo Alto and I want to see us preserve and ensure that we have that for the future generations. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to Ed Lowing, who has many years of experience on our Planning and Transportation Commission. So we'll turn it over to Ed.
Okay. Thanks very much for hosting this. You guys do amazing activist kind of work and that's only exactly what we need. So keep it up. I was told that the script would be sort of a little bit about me and why I'm running, a little bit about experience, and then a little bit about issues. So that's what I'm going to do. And I want to tell you first why I'm running. I want to do it in the context of this historical day because it was John Lewis's funeral. So if any of you have seen clips of that, he's been a very inspiring iconic man. But I've been walking around the neighborhood to get the required signatures for being on the ballot. Yes, even in the COVID, the state requires physical signatures on a physical piece of paper. And so the neighbors are really excited. I'm really delighted that you're running. Thanks for doing it. But each one of them also said, "What? Why on earth are you doing this? It's thankless. The problems are not fixable. Everybody's going to be mad at you, not to mention you're never going to play golf again and your wife's going to forget your name." So that's fine. But these comments that I'm saying here, I just, you know, kind of worked on today because of the funeral. Here's an extraordinary man like him that's worked for decades on intractable civil rights issues for Americans and at the end of his time today, he'd really only made, you know, some progress and he's gone. Our issues here are somewhat different, although we certainly have a racial issue to deal with as well. But we're facing, you know, immense problems. Lydia already ticked some of them off. There's tons of office buildings, many of which we don't need or want. Traffic is insane. The state is now telling us, you know, how many houses we have to build, where to build them, and maybe even not have any zoning control over that. So it would be kind of easy to say, "Hey, we gave it a shot. We really worked hard on it. The problems are intractable and we can't get there." But, you know, that's not what Mr. Lewis did and here's what President Clinton said about him today. John Lewis is a walking rebuke to people who thought, "Well, we ain't there yet. We've been working a long time. Isn't it just time to bag it?" Nope. He kept moving. He kept helping. He kept imagining and lived and worked and moved for his beloved community. And I think that says it all. So I want to do that for us and I think we still have a shot at changing things. I've got the background, the motivation to help lead that. Obama said today that Mr. Lewis had unbreakable perseverance and I know John Lewis, but that's what I have as well. So I want to jump in and work on these things. I've been here 30 years, kids in the school district. I've always done community service in Palo Alto. That's just kind of been my MO. I don't know if I was born with it or what, but I just feel like I have to do that. So before, 10 years on commissions, I was on nonprofit boards in the city. I've got a lot of business experience at the executive level. I think I've faced every joy and sorrow possible in business so I can handle speed bumps of budgets and people and all those kinds of things that is directly applicable to the challenges we have in front of us in Palo Alto. And I am just a budget hawk, but I believe a budget hawk has to be based on values, not based on just numbers. Numbers are easy. And we got to build it from the bottom up based on what our citizens' values are. Lydia did a survey that was better than the city's survey. It came out that, you know, we should be optimizing for safety in public service and that was the first thing that got cut. That makes no sense whatsoever. So I also believe in complete transparency. I believe that citizens need to be involved right at the beginning on issues all the way through and not dealt with as a checkbox at the end that, yes, we asked the citizens. So that's kind of my approach and I think my, you know, combination of sort of city and and community service background and business background are the kind of the whole mixture of ingredients that I bring to the party to address a lot of these tough problems. So just quickly on the issues, it's hard to prioritize amongst all of the ones that we have to deal with and will have to deal with. But I'm really concerned right now that, you know, the council is not really accountable to the voters. There is just too much that's being done by the city manager and the city manager, call him the CEO, our seven elected officials are the board of directors and they're still in charge. So I'd like to see a little bit more proactivity as opposed to passivity on the part of some council members. And definitely that does not include the one that's sitting here in front of us. And I think that, you know, all these issues have to start and stay with citizen input all the way along the way. As I said, the finances, you know, we have to be really conservative, particularly in this environment. There's all kinds of things that we can look at on a more structural basis going forward, whether that's the fire department setup, the police department setup, outsourcing some people as opposed to paying them now, paying them for the rest of their lives and pensions. That all has to be done and I think that there should be some structural changes to the council to make sure that that does get done in terms of the way committees are run, et cetera. But the place that that shouldn't be done is in the emergency budget where we had to cut 40 million and some council members were just grandstanding to the press instead of trying to actually get stuff done. Drives me crazy. The whole objective here is to get real things done for the city and the way to do that is to work together and get, you know, at least four votes, perfectly closer to seven on some issues and move that ball forward. So the... And then the last issue, which I can only touch on because we all know how difficult it is, is the housing crisis as it's called and we won't debate right now how we got into this crisis. That's the subject for other debate. But I always hear that we need more housing from a lot of council members and I don't see any housing getting built. So it's time to get more quantitative about that and more accountable about that. And so what I call for is a prioritization of the kind of housing segments that we want, again, a values-based system of what we want to be in Palo Alto and look at each one of those and decide what we're going to do, what we can do, when we're going to do it. I think the highest priority is what is generically called affordable housing, you know, true BMR housing. As we all know, it's also the hardest to finance because of the way it gets financed. Well, let's step up. That's either going to be part of our values or it's not. And I don't want to live in Atherton. I want to live here and I want diversity in the people that I live with across the board, economic, you know, background, et cetera. So I think we have to step up to that one sort of no matter what it takes or how long it takes. But we have to, first of all, do the right analysis and look for other ways to get that stuff, that type of housing funded. I mean, Apple just announced the $400 million investment in housing in the neighborhood. Were we in those discussions? Why not? I don't get that. So again, we have to be more proactive about getting involved in some of these things and not wait for staff reports to come back and say, "Here's the limit to what we can do." So, and lastly, I just want to say on housing, we need to work on both sides of that out-of-whack fraction for office over housing. There's not one or the other that's fixed. Both of them are workable. We all had whatever that was, fifth grade math. So let's work on both sides of that fraction and see what we can sort out. You know, I think that we can make this thing happen. My goal obviously is, you know, a four-person minimum majority. I'd be happy if we get that to put forth an ordinance that does not allow any new office unless we get an amount of housing that we want with the authorization to do any kind of office. So I hope we can make that happen. There's a lot of work to do and, you know, I'm ready for the fight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. We'll move on to our last candidate, but he's a wonderful guy, Greer Stone. He's working on the Human Relations Commission in the county and has also worked in Palo Alto on the Human Relations Commission, which is significant in terms of what's happening today in our current environment. So I will turn it over to Greer.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I just thank Palo Altons for sensible zoning, for organizing this event. Thank you to everyone who's on this call right now on a Thursday evening and the Giants are even playing right now. So I'm sure some of you probably would rather be watching the Giants. But my hope is that Lydia, Ed, and I are going to have a better season this year than the Giants are going to, unfortunately. But thank you for all for being here. I want to, I'll give you a brief introduction about who I am, my background and experience in the community. I'll talk to you then about why I'm running and then I'll briefly cover the issues because I know you have a lot of questions to ask and I want to make sure that we spend significant time on answering your questions. So first of all, my name is Greer Stone. I was raised really in Palo Alto. I grew up here. I went to Duvernac. I went to Jordan, of course, now Green, and I graduated from Palo Alto High School. I'm really blessed right now to be able to not only be living in the community that I grew up in, but I'm also working in the community and I'm able, I'm a teacher here. I teach US history at Gunn High School and I'm the Student Activities Director at Pally. So it's a really great experience to be able to be currently working at both high schools, which really gives me a really incredible, just, I think, understanding of not only the youth in our town, but also just the broad spectrum of interests across the city and the differences between really the kind of the Gunn High School community and the Pally community as well. I currently serve as the, it's actually, we've changed our name now, Terry. We're now the Human Rights Commission. We were the Human Relations Commission when I was appointed there, but we decided to change it to the Human Rights Commission just to make it a little more clear about what we do, which is really looking out for all people within Santa Clara County. Before joining the Human Rights Commission, I served as the Chair of the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission. I've really been involved in this community since I was 23 years old and I was asked to leave the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission to join the County Human Rights Commission by Joe Semidion back in 2017. And I remember what the reason he gave me, which I think is really, I guess, speaks to, at least, how he believes in my leadership style, is that he told me that at the time that I joined the Human Rights Commission, that the commission was just there, but it wasn't really moving forward. It wasn't getting things done. And he told me at the time that he was impressed with what I was doing on the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission, my leadership style there, our ability to really start pushing the conversation forward in this community, talking about difficult issues like domestic violence and racism and homelessness. And he wanted me to be able to do the same thing at the County Human Rights Commission. So currently, I Vice Chair the Human Rights Commission. I also Chair the County's Justice Review Committee, which is really, which is focused on social justice, racial equality within our criminal justice system. And so, as I'm sure you're all aware, that is obviously a really important topic within our community right now. In addition to be a teacher and a human rights activist commissioner, I'm also an attorney. So I left the practice of law full-time to become a teacher. I felt like that was more my calling. I felt like I could do better work in my community as a teacher. I've always had the belief that education is really the panacea to all of society's problems and especially here in Palo Alto, the issue of social emotional well-being for our students is so important. I lost one of my best high school friends to suicide not long ago and I joined Project Safety Net here in Palo Alto, a kind of a coalition of community members trying to encourage, trying to promote youth well-being. And it was really through that whole process that really showed me the importance of having adults who can steer our youth in the right direction and give them a strong connection. And so those are some of the reasons why I decided to become a teacher. Currently, I'm also the Midtown Residents Association Chair, which is the largest residents' association in the city. And I'm a renter. My wife and I, we both rent a one-bedroom apartment here in Midtown, right next to the Phil's Coffee. So if any of you ever want to get a coffee with me, I'm happy to do so. I'm right around the corner. So that's a little background about myself. The reason why I'm running is I really think that Palo Alto has reached an inflection point right now because of COVID-19. That pandemic, in addition to the Black Lives Matters movement, as well as the economic problems we're having, is all incredibly tragic, but it's creating, I think, this opportunity for us to really be able to forge ahead with the community that we really want, that is a community that is going to be diverse and vibrant and puts the residents first, which I don't, I still to this day can't understand why that is ever a controversial issue, right? Public servants represent us and this is something that I teach my students in our US history class and civics class all the time and it's something that ninth, 10th, and 11th graders just get and then they grow up and they become politicians and they forget it. So we really need more people on that council like Lydia. I can't imagine what we'll be able to do once we have a majority, once we have a majority there. And so the areas that I really want to focus on, my issues, a lot of them have already been talked about, but affordable housing, I think, is going to be absolutely one of the key, one of the key things that we really need to address. I have been so tired of hearing this farce of trickle-down housing that the current majority has been putting out there, as well as a lot of our state legislatures as well, this idea that if we just build market-rate housing, that that's going to trickle down and help people like my wife and I. That is never going to be the case. You know, I feel like as a Democrat, I recognize the importance of government stepping in and fixing broken problems. And I think that's what we're here to do on the city council. So we really do need an investment in affordable housing. We need to create that workforce housing for teachers and first responders and people who work in this city who make good money but can't possibly afford to buy or even rent in Palo Alto. We need to expand our revenue base to be able to get that. We really need to look into a business tax when our economy recovers. And we just really need to start getting creative and thinking out of the box. And there are various different projects around the country that we can really learn from to really emulate here in Palo Alto and I'm really excited to bring some of those ideas forward. In addition to affordable housing, of course, our economic recovery is going to be key coming out of this. I too was really distraught following the council's debate over budget cuts, seeing that they were really going to be first focusing those budget cuts on the areas that were going to hurt us residents more, which I think is absolutely ridiculous. And I think if we move forward with just this kind of this mantra of people first, of residents first, that that's really going to be able to guide us in a lot of our decision-making. In addition to that, traffic and transportation is something that continues to top the list of Palo Altons in our annual survey every single year. We really need to focus on that. We really need to create a hybrid city that is going to, I guess, understand the reality of living in California and living in Palo Alto. I'm a young person. I don't know a single person who does not own, a single person outside of high school who doesn't own a car. It's just a reality of living here in the Bay Area. But we also need to make sure that it is a pedestrian-friendly, bikeable city because that is all going to be key. And there's no way our city is going to be able to meet our goals of greenhouse gas reductions by 2030 if we continue to promote some policies that are really going to, that kind of encourages more single occupancy vehicles, such as RPP programs, that force more commercial vehicles into our neighborhoods. And then finally, my last really big issue is focusing on a greater community-government partnership. I've been really frustrated that the city of Palo Alto tends to ignore the residents, tends to focus more on their own expensive consultants than the genius that exists within the city. I mean, we're so fortunate in Palo Alto to have some of the greatest minds in the world and that's not hyperbole. That's just fact. I mean, if you look at, like, if you look at the NV cap that's been going on, I mean, the consultants that the city has has proposed some pretty ridiculous ideas and our own, actually PAS leadership, proposed the alternative M, which is far better than anything that these city consultants have proposed. And I've just been frustrated as Chair of the Midtown Residents Association that we are constantly ignored, never asked our opinions on any issues that even face our community. So we really need to embrace the natural talents that we have in this community and open that up. And one last thing, going back to this idea that this pandemic, though tragic, is creating opportunities for us, we are starting to see some of the benefits from telecommuting within this town. Like Lydia said, parking is no longer a problem right now. Traffic isn't that big of a problem right now. And all of this will eventually end, but I think if we have strong city leadership that does what the County of Santa Clara is currently discussing right now of requiring large employers to continue telecommuting when this is all over, I think we can create some really great opportunities to not only, by pursuing telecommuting policies within the city, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to improve parking, to improve traffic, and then hopefully open up some of that office space that's there that should not be necessary in the future to create more housing opportunities. So those are the issues that I'm going to be focused on and I'm really excited to have this conversation with all of you tonight and answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Greer. We're going to explain a little bit of the process now of how we're going to handle questions and answers. So I'll turn it over to my fellow colleague, Maury Green, and he'll explain the process.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you very much. We are in a small technical bind right now because inadvertently, I managed to stop the chat board from working, which I thought we would use initially. So in the meantime, we do have So in the meantime, we do have questions that have been submitted by some of the viewers. I'm happy to tell you that currently we have 70 people here in this forum. Very good turnout tonight. We are going to propose some questions. Joe Hirsch and I will be the question panel, and we will propose a series of questions to the candidates in sequence and in rotating order. And they will each have three minutes to answer, up to three minutes to answer a question. So I will start with the first question, and we'll start with Ed Lowing. And my question is, what would you do to encourage the development of affordable housing? And in fact, how do you define affordable?
Ed, before you start, you're going to get three minutes, and I'm going to be the timer, counting knockdowns at the bell. So you will hear at 2 minutes and 45 seconds, the symbol on my, my view. And that will give you 15 more seconds to answer. We have to do this because we have about 60 minutes left in the primary program. It may get extended, but we want to have at least six questions answered, three minutes a person. You know, that's going to get pretty close to the full hour. So watch for my hand reaction, and that will tell you 15 seconds more. Ed, Lydia, and Greer.
So, so the question now is a two-part question. What's my, essentially, what's my definition of affordable housing and how are we going to get it done?
That's correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I think the definitions of affordable housing have been too fuzzy. And yes, there are certain segments within that, but the one that I'm most focused on, as I said in my earlier remarks, is BMR, you know, truly below market rate. Because that is what we need to attract the kind of resident citizens to provide diversity here. And some of them are already working here. So for the same reasons of encouraging them to work and live in the same place and reduce carbon and, and reduce traffic, then that, that's what I mean is truly below, below market rate. Now, in terms, as I also said, you know, the, the affordable housing is the toughest to finance, but we should still always look at the traditional ways of doing that with tax credits versus the affordable housing developers. But we have to go way beyond that. I really do believe that partnerships with some of the large corporations here who, A, need some housing maybe for some of their lower-wage workers, and B, because they have good community understanding and a good community spirit, would cooperate. And you're seeing that already. Facebook, Apple, Google, it's happening, but for some reason, we don't seem to be at the table. That's got to change, because that's a, a very big opportunity. I also think that at some point, you know, we have to address the fact that if we want this, we need to step up. And we need to wait, a way to figure out how to contribute to the econo, to the financing of these projects. And, you know, that was tried before. A business tax is quite appropriate at some level. You know, we have to discuss what that level is. That went off the table, it should come back on the table. As I understand it, last time, that was going to provide about $10 million over the course of about eight years, I believe it was. And, you know, that's a start. It doesn't, you know, build a lot of units, but that's a start. So that kind of, that kind of thinking with partnerships and with corporations, a little bit of Palo Alto financing as well, and traditional partnerships, all, all three of those are a good place to start.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate the, the quick answer, the good answer. Let's move on to Greer Stone.
Yeah, I, I think Palo Alto's policies have clearly, have clearly failed us when it comes to affordable housing production. I mean, and, and, and to be blunt, regular, I mean, market-rate housing as well. And since 2015, Palo Alto has only permitted 555 new, new housing units. If we're going to be able to meet our, our comp plan goals, we're going to need to be creating 3,000 to 4,000 new housing units by, by 2030. And the housing that we're creating is predominantly market-rate housing. I mean, like, in 2018, Palo Alto only met 6% of its very low-income housing requirements. And we, we got about 52% of our above moderate income target. So we're actually doing pretty well when it comes to our market-rate housing and really, really poorly when it comes to our very low-income housing. And I think the, my three strategies for tackling this would be first, rebalancing the jobs-housing ratio. Our jobs-housing ratio is so out of whack that it is, is, I think, one of the key causes for our astronomical housing prices. So we need to rebalance the jobs-housing ratio, preserve the existing affordable housing that we have, and then finally, actually investing in affordable BMR housing. So first, I mean, kind of like the, the first step going on that, on that jobs-housing balance is if we just allow the, the free market to create housing for us, we're going to get more market-rate housing. Which of course, market-rate housing in Palo Alto is more housing for millionaires, billionaires, and I do not see a moral requirement for a government to create housing for that. I do believe we have, we have a, a need and a desire and a want to build housing for people who work and serve us in this community and who are, who create the, the vibrant, enjoyable community that we have to, to live in, as well as creating diversity within socioeconomic diversity, as well as, as well as racial diversity within the city, something that we've really been losing lately. The second step is preserving the existing affordable housing that we have. Within my first six months, if I was elected, I would be sure to submit a colleague's memo advocating for Palo Alto to adopt a no-net-loss policy of housing. Basically, that would require, if you are going to, if, if you have a plan to tear down an existing housing, then the housing that you're going to replace, replace it with better have the same or more housing than you would lose there. I think we also need to start using a displacement impact study. We already do SEQA studies when, for new development. We should also be looking at, will this development displace communities of color? If it is, then it can't go forward. And finally, we really do need to invest directly in affordable housing in, in this community. And that's at different levels, right? There's different levels of, of AMI. Currently, our, our policies only require 15% of new housing, 15% new housing to be deed-restricted to BMR housing, but that can go up to 120% AMI. I think we really need to change that. We need to see how much can we increase that inclusionary zoning to be able to, to make it manageable for, for our community, as well as really focusing our housing policies to make sure that we can get lower P, uh, lower incomes as, as well in that. And then again, like I mentioned earlier, really expanding our, our base of fundraising for this and looking at where we can consider more housing as well. So I think we want to look.
I think we need to move on.
Sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the, the bell.
Oh, it's up there. It's up there. Gotta watch it. Okay, Lydia, up to you. Unmute yourself, Lydia. There you go.
Okay, thank you. So most of what Ed and Greer had said, you know, I, I follow along. I do want to also emphasize that, you know, in terms of ensuring that we don't lose any housing when, when somebody demolishes, we want to make sure that they don't double-dip into the density bonuses and actually give themselves more square footage in other areas. So that's, that's something that we have to revisit in our, our, our municipal codes. Also, you know, one of the big areas in looking at affordable housing is to ensure that we preserve what we have here already. At this point, we don't even know which, which units that are affordable now, which is below-market-rate housing. We don't know how many are going to be ending their 50-year or 55-year. There's limitations on the amount of years these affordable units are, are, are placed. And so we need to know how many are going to be going off the market, if they're going to be really reinstating them as affordable. So I think that we need to have more data, and a lot of times I find that staff would prefer not to know. So we're actually working based on a lot of things that we have to rediscover or just not knowing. So preserving existing housing. And, you know, there has to be really meaningful wanting to preserve. For example, the President's Hotel, we lost 75 units when we didn't have to change the law. We, we could have kept it by not changing the law and saying to the owners of the property that this is what the law is. Instead, our staff, as well as a council majority, decided to go ahead with it because, you know, they have fears that they, they changed the law in order not to be sued. So that's another thing that I have a lot of issues with, that we change the law for, for developers, not in the best interest for our town, not the best interest for our city, but we change laws for developers, for special interests. Then there's also low-hanging fruit, which we could be enacting also. For example, the, when you build rental housing, there's, there should be a percentage of rental housing that should be low-income, designated low-income. Yet staff hasn't, even though it's been almost two and a half years that it, that the courts has reversed it and said that we could do that, our staff has not. Instead, they're analyzing and studying it and seeing if it will pencil out for the developer. Lastly, I see the hand up. We need to change our municipal code to, for the definition of affordable. What does the word affordable mean? Our definition in our municipal code at this time says affordable is up to 120% area of medium income. That is for most tech workers. And so if it's, if you offer that, if you put that out there for people to, for developers to use, they're going to take it and build 120% AMI. They're not going to build below 80 or 60% AMI. It's all about profits. So we need to change that definition in our codes. Lastly, yes, to build. Okay.
Lydia, you have to stop. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Joe, would you please ask your question?
Yes, and you've touched on this, all of you, in part, but let's be a little bit more specific, if you will. What pieces of specific local legislation would you work to pass in your first two years in office after being elected or re-elected, in Lydia's case? And Lydia, would you go first, followed by Greer, and then Ed, so we shake up the order of answering. Lydia, you're on.
I think the first one would be one that has to do with telecommuting. Through this COVID time, we, we see that telecommunit, commuting is something that works. And so I think that the city should come up with a regulation or a law that would impose on companies over a certain size to have a certain percentage of their employees work from home. And so that would be one. And then also to further look into our, our Transportation Management Association, as well as to strengthen transportation demand management. The second piece that I would push for is all the low-hanging fruit housing matters that I have, I have already co-authored a colleague's memo and have submitted it. However, it is slow to act on because most of the actions that has come before council or that will come before council is about production. So I would continue to push for that, that legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Greer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I touched a bit on this in my, in my last remarks. I, I think the very first thing is making sure that we have a no-net-loss policy on our, on our housing. It would have prevented the loss of the President's Hotel. And really, our most, our most affordable housing is the housing that it, that currently exists within this city. I mean, new, new housing is generally going to be more expensive. And so making sure we are not losing housing, and if we are losing housing, that it will be replaced with, with more, with at least, with at least the same, if not more, and preserving a right of return for those residents who are going to be temporarily displaced and requiring the developer to, to essentially help the people who are going to be currently displaced during that, during that redevelopment project, to make sure that they are able to stay in this community so that their kids can continue to go to school in this community while that construction is taking place. I also think it's really important to make sure that we are having this, this displacement study, to make sure that we are not losing the little diversity that our, that our city has, and requiring developers to actually prove to us that their project is not going to displace particular, particular communities within our town. I also agree with what Lydia said, the Palmer fix, the idea that we should be able to have inclusionary zoning for rental units is, it's, it's, it goes beyond the pale. I think for our city to have not enacted that already, the court case already occurred several years ago. I know in the council's housing work plan, it calls for that. And the fact that city staff has not moved on that goes to show, I think, a deeper problem within our community that, right, the hierarchy of this city is that it's council, then staff. The way it has been, well, really, it's, it's the residents, council, staff. Staff seems to think it's the other way around. And staff thinks they're the ones who have been directing council and directing, and directing our policy. We really need to change that. And I, and I think strong leadership will, and with, with us having the majority, will be able to do so, and will be able to actually force the issue for city staff to bring forward these issues. And it, and it's just like any other business. I mean, if city staff is saying, hey, sir, we can't, we can't get that done, then it's time to move on, right? You, you can't, you don't have your employees dictating that. So I think that's key. And I am, and I am really excited to be able to further explore the, these ideas of, these ideas of telecommuting. I think it's really frustrating that the county of Santa Clara has, sorry, my, my time is up, I, I want to respect that, but I, I agree with what Councilmember Koo was saying on telecommuting.
Not sure all these things can get done in two years, but they can all get started in about two months, I hope. First, as I indicated, I think there has to be a rigorous, aggressive, quantitative, business-like approach to analyzing and prioritizing what kind of housing we need. And that has to be completely in dialogue with current developers and, and others so that, you know, everything's on the table. But it ain't happening, and we, we need it to happen. So it's, you know, just normal business practice. We want to get the housing built, we decide which, which one it is, give us a timeline, give us the numbers, give us the options, give us what could go wrong, what could go right, and, you know, let's address it. And prioritize it, make some decisions on it, assuming that there's funding there. If there isn't, you got to change the timeline. So there, there's nothing real mysterious about this, but it doesn't, it doesn't happen here. The second thing is, or not, I'm not prioritizing this, I'm just giving you sort of things that I like to get done. The, we, we've all talked about this, the, there, there's something just like the balance is, is wrong in the way the, the council is operating in a number of ways. I always want to say structurally. There is stuff that the council has done a good job of debating and approving and passing on to PTC, for example, and it never gets there. In-lug housing fee was supposed to come to us a year and a half ago. And instead, staff, staff came back and said, well, yeah, but now we don't think there's going to be much construction downtown, so we don't need it. So remove the moratorium on it. They didn't do what council asked them to do, you know? So that's just kind of an oversight issue. Somebody has to get out, you know, the equivalent of the yellow sticky pads and say, check with the mayor in six months and see how this progress is going if it hasn't gone to PTC. You know, there's just basic stuff like that. And then the third thing is, there's a couple of huge areas that really, you know, need a look. And that's what I said should not happen in an emergency budgeting process when you need to fund in four weeks. But looking at, you know, how we can structure high-expense areas like police and fire in a different way, I think needs to be also done in an orderly business kind of way and decide what can be done. For example, and, and I don't want to go into detail in this short amount of time, but does everybody that's doing all of the, the police work have to be a sworn officer with all that training and expense and wearing a that training and expense and wearing a sidearm and all that? Probably not. So look at ways to do that, look at ways to organize it, look at ways to share services. We know what to do. I don't go into it with any hypothesis other than there's probably some money to be saved there, but it needs to be organized, not not shooting from the hip. And, you know, that is a way to, over time, pull a lot of expense out that, you know, doesn't have to be there. And if it's outsourced to people that are lower cost, you know, non sworn officers, there's also no long term payment that you have to do on the pension plan. Those are the three I'd look at first.
Thank you very much, Ed. The next question relates to a very interesting topic of green energy and the use of natural gas in Palo Alto. What is your viewpoint? Or let me give you a little background on it really quickly. We know that the city has said that new housing construction in the city should be phasing out the use of natural gas to cut down CO2 emission. It's been said that the use of sea of natural gas to generate electricity for electrically powered homes actually generates more CO2. So what's your viewpoint on the reduction of the use of natural gas in Palo Alto? And let's start this time with Lydia Koo.
It's a it's a very aggressive program, you know, the reduction of natural gas. At the same time, I I'm always a believer of knowing where is the electricity coming from? So where is the birthplace? And then where does it end in? So the thing is with with electricity right now, a large portion of it is produced by natural gas. That's where the source is. And I have great concerns on that about that. At the same time, also, electricity is not cheap. So, yes, if a person is building a new home, I can understand that. New construction, I can understand that. But there's also other methods that I would like to explore. You know, there are some of the energy that is used in Japan. Could those be something that that might be explored instead of just electricity? One source of energy concerns me because if that is out, then what happens? It's 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 not an easy decision to make, but I have to think about. I I think that I there is a lot that is still unknown, and I'm not completely sold on it. I think that there, like I said, you know, there is still the sources are through natural gas. So as long as that is there, I can't say that it is exactly clean because you're causing dirty use somewhere else. The cost is another concern for me. Not everybody is going to be able to afford it. And then also our grids, do we have enough grids throughout in order to support this type of electricity use? If if we have all electric cars or electricity used throughout the house, are there enough grids in order to support this, especially since we do use a lot of PG&E power lines? And we are buying a lot of electricity, even though we own our own utilities company? So there needs to be more answers to this before I can be fully on board on this issue.
Ed Lowing, would you like to take the next space?
Yeah, I have to say it's hard to follow that. That was a excellent, comprehensive answer there. All 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 excellent points. The other one is that, you know, there's a connection, there's a little bit of hesitation, certainly in in retrofitting, I would not be in favor of retrofitting older homes because people have what they have, and I don't like sort of dictating that. In newer newer homes and apartment buildings, I'm I'm more receptive to that for for the obvious reasons because it can be built in there and you don't have to, you know, pull the gas in there at all and you save and you save money. But still a little bit still a little bit cautious about dictating this as opposed to highly recommending it in the first two years or something along those lines. I think the the SCAP, which which I've reviewed and looked at, and I know this is going a little bit beyond the question, but it's a little bit optimistic in terms of the the goals that are in there overall. And like Lydia, I want to make sure that we really have, you know, rigorous study done before we're before we're implementing things when they get to, you know, at some point when they're trying to, you know, get SOV ownership down or out in Palo Alto, that's going too far. It's going too far in terms of just, you know, regulation of what people can do in their lives, but I I just don't think it's necessary. So there's there's general, I think, some aspirational goals in that in that plan that they need to look. And so that's right, leave that one.
Greer, your turn. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, for me, the the goal of climate change, you know, of of climate change and and having a green city, I think, is one of is one of the most important goals that that we as government leaders have. I mean, I think we have a moral obligation to leave the to leave this planet and our society cleaner and better for the next for the next generation. I think that is that is a very worthy worthy goal. The other, but but we also have to recognize a lot of the social justice problems that do come in when we are talking about some mandates that can end up becoming far more expensive for lower income communities. I mean, when we're talking about, so I I agree with what Ed was saying as far as careful about retrofitting, but when we're looking forward at at new housing production, right? Should should this be mandated for a home that is going to sell for $3 to $5 million? Yeah, absolutely. But when we're talking about some of our more, you know, affordable housing pride, affordable housing projects, I feel this is one of those difficult areas where when we pull the lever on on conservation, does that then mean that that the that the price on the on the housing side or on the transportation side, does that become so prohibitive for entering the market that it is continuing to hurt our affordability for our affordability problems within this within this community? So like, so those are the the kind of the two areas that that I would be thinking about sitting on council deciding issues like that.
Thank you very much. Joe, I think it's your question next.
Okay. Plan B area 2050 continues to concentrate job growth in already jobs-rich areas such as Silicon Valley, and then mandates a huge increase of dense housing in those areas, including ours. What concrete steps would you take to get ABAE HCD, which is Association of Bay Area Governments and the California Department of Housing and Community Development, to create effective incentives to disperse jobs to non-jobs-rich areas such as Oakland, San Jose, and the East Bay counties? Greer, I don't think you've had a chance to go first, so we'll start with you, then we'll go with Ed and end up with Lydia on this question.
Yeah, I think we're all probably incredibly frustrated at the power that these not that non-elected officials have to be able to designate where where housing growth is going to be in our community and just overall development for the next several decades. I think that that's that's wrong and an area that we that we really need to step up as far as as far as our abilities to be able to our our ability as a city to be able to, I guess, advocate for these issues at a state and regional level. I think that's going to be one of the areas that is going to be key. I I I've been pretty disappointed over the past several years that I feel like the city's level of advocacy for for issues at the at the at the state level or regional level hasn't been up to snuff with what we're what I think I think we're used to and expect here in Palo Alto. And so having a council that's really going to be directing city staff and our and our and our advocates at that at that level, making sure it's very clear what it is that we expect and 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 saying that it is absolutely unfair to be putting that level of job growth in an area that is already inundated with jobs and lacking the housing. Because one of the one of the areas in the state law does require ABAE and MTC to actually consider the balance of the the jobs housing balance within within the region. And it appears that they have not done that and that they have had these negotiations behind closed doors and have not reached out for for community input and input from from local councils. And so I think making sure that the community is educated on this is going to be key. Because so far, not many people that I talked to is familiar at this with all at all. I sent a letter to city council at the end of June encouraging them to take up this issue and object to it when there was still time. But of course, the like, the I think time passed on July 10th, and here we are already at the end of July. And so just being strong leaders and being and and being willing and able to direct city staff and our advocates towards that regional level to say enough is enough. We're not just going to stand by and let you, non-elected officials, dictate growth here in Palo Alto.
Is it me? Yes. Okay. Yeah, it just was, it was just shocking at how I don't want to be accusatory and say hidden, but how how little there was there was about the timelines for that. At PTC, we got it two days before the deadline, and there was no visibility at all in in the community. I I also get that. I mean, the city has to know that this is a huge issue for every resident that has any interest in local government. So the the lack of visibility on that is just is shocking. But I think to Greer's point, you know, that doesn't have to be over. There's still room for the community to be very involved in this issue and be very active in getting getting that message across. When you talked about, I think, part of your question, use the word incentives, you know, one is hearing the loud voices of a community who's saying, you know, I'm sorry, you just got this one wrong. Maybe you did your best, but you you got it wrong. So I think that could help as an incentive. I think that, you know, some of our council members, including Lydia, said we do want to appeal this, and we want to have more discussion with you ABAE folks to just kind of point out. Oh, I just lost my Zoom. Can you guys see me? There we go. All right. All of a sudden, everything disappeared. Still have a minute. We saw you have. Okay. It is is they need, I kind of lost my train of thought, but I was saying, I think that they need to be reeducated on the fact that it just doesn't make sense, some of the things that they've talked about, and to try to almost negotiate with other regions and say, wouldn't it be better if some of those jobs, you know, happened in in Fremont or further east than over here? Wouldn't you really like to have that jobs? And and try to have council members talk to folks in other regions and maybe jointly go over and say, hey, you know, we'd sort of like to do a trade here and, you know, we'll take some of your jobs because it doesn't seem like in however they came up with these decisions with an occasional representative speaking up to the ABAE folks. You know, it just didn't, it just didn't turn out, and I think there's still some time to to appeal it. Now, in terms of the totals, there's even some folks on the other end of the spectrum who think that's too few houses, 441,000. But for this discussion and this question, we're not even talking about that. We're just saying, where where should allocations go? And so so I think that the council members can can have an effect. I think that we have to use our city lobbyists, you know, directly to, you know, get the point across, and the citizens need to be loud about it.
Lydia, you're up.
So definitely, you know, I've been I've been following this for such a long time, and it it has brought a lot of surprise. I want to thank Greg Schmidt for taking this up and following it all along through this time and doing the research and keeping us updated. But also, you know, Plan Bay Area came out of S out of a very good intention, which is SB 375, which had to do with sustainability, ensuring that we have a healthy environment that we live in so that we have, there is a plan. But the plan is very, very tipped to one side where it's all about development and building and not really looking at spreading the wealth. ABAE and MTC represents nine county areas, but if you look at it, they're focused only in this stretch of the Bay Area, which is from South San from San Francisco down to San Jose. And the East Bay is left out, Central Contra Costa County is left out, Central Valley is left out. So there's a lot of areas that they could grow into. When I asked one of the candidates who were running for the senator's spot, I asked, why can't, why won't you petition or ask the governor, ask the other legislature legislators to spread and to encourage companies, give them incentives to move to places that have the lower cost on housing in order and have them build their companies or headquarters or part of their departments out there? And they told me it was because there is no talent over there. Well, now we know in COVID season that people are working from home, they can telecommute, they can work from home. So that's one. The other one is, the other part of it is, every time you designate, you designate and you put a boundary around an area, you have just increased the land prices on that piece of land in that area. So now land cost is high, construction cost is high. That's why nobody wants to build affordable housing. Everything has to pencil out at this time. So when you draw lines around a place and call it a priority development area or transit rich area or resource rich area, your land prices go up immediately. And that is what MTC ABAE is doing with their housing with this with this housing, with this Plan Bay Area. And that's where their RENA numbers come out from. Lastly, there's a lot to go into, but lastly, I want to say that the plan calls out for affordable housing. It calls for about 57.4% area median income housing, yet there's no enforcement. There's no penalties for not building it. Instead, they give away and they and they 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 don't enforce it. But because I'm I'm thinking also that it also has to do with the more you fail at not putting enough housing, the more they're able to take away local control. And they come through with top-down governance, and then they streamline and they tell you that we streamlined it. So it takes away your voice. It takes away the character of your city, of my city, of our city, of our livability. I see your hand. Thank you.
Ori, onto you with the next question.
Yes, it is. The next question goes back to something we did talk about a little bit before, and that is, what is your view of the use of a citywide business tax? How would you structure it? And what do you think that the accumulated funds should be used for? And we'll start this time with Greer Stone.
I'm I'm in favor of a citywide business tax. I I think right now with the economic with the economic problems facing the city and the difficulty of our of our small businesses and our and our community-serving businesses to really hang on, this is obviously not the right time for it. But that's one of the but when the economy does recover, when we get to closer to our our kind of our our normal times, I guess, then I think a business tax is absolutely going to be appropriate to to do so. I was I was pretty happy with the with the direction that the that the business tax was was taking before it was before it was removed as a before before it was removed because of because of the pandemic. But I do not believe that a citywide business tax should just go into the go into the general fund. I don't really, I don't really trust it to go into that. I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be sort of earmarked for the for the, I guess, the the areas where these businesses are having sort of the greatest negative impact on our livability within this community. So a percentage of it should be designated for affordable housing. When we're talking about how do we actually create that affordable housing, business tax is going to be, I think, one of the key income sources to be able to to do so. I really, there's, there's no, there's no greater reason, I think, for our sky-high housing costs than than our jobs housing ratio and the influx of of highly affluent generally tech employees within within this region. So having businesses pay their fair share is going to be key. And I think I think all I think already property taxes in Palo Alto are way too high. It's it. It terrifies me when I talk to people and they tell me about their property taxes. And it's kind of one of those few moments that I'm grateful that I'm not a Palo Alto homeowner because I go, holy smokes. I don't know how people can afford $30,000 a year in in property taxes. Businesses, it's time for them to pay their fair share. And the fact that Palo Alto is one of the few cities in the Bay Area that doesn't have any form of business tax really just goes to show the values that that city council seems to have and and city staff that they put businesses over people. And that is absolutely, that's absolutely timed and and I'm and I'm pretty confident that we are going to retake the majority this year and and bring that that lopsided value system to an end.
Okay, next will be Lydia.
But, you know, I I do agree with Greer that while I was very pro the business tax when we had initially proposed it, now is not the time. A lot of the businesses are suffering and we do want to make sure that there is some support in order to to support some of the local community-serving businesses here. So if if we were to bring forward a tax, you know, it would be something that we would have to do. Why would have a pro-resident majority and that is not going to be just looking at development? So it would be, I think, in in a couple of years, it perhaps be a good time to revisit that. But I would like to see that indeed it does fund affordable housing that is below 60% AMI, area median income. And I'm pretty specific about that because that is the that is the way in order to ensure that we have well-balanced society here in Palo Alto. Then, you know, I would really like to see that we do put up some of the funding towards local, robust shuttle services. You know, that, of course, that would have to be when we feel a lot safer after COVID. But it is a good thing to start thinking about because a lot of people find it so difficult to to get from the first mile, the last mile, and even within the neighborhoods. I live in Barron Park or I did live in Barron Park. And then I would have to walk quite a distance to get onto El Camino in order to to be able to get on a bus. And not everybody can do that. So that would be one. And then I would like to see, because we're coming out of the crisis right now, I would like to see some funding go back into reinvesting into community retail strategies. Right now, we have a very big imbalance of retail and community-serving businesses. I'd like to have a to to be able to fund a economic development director or a specialist. It doesn't have to be a director. It can be a specialist who does know how to research, do marketing research to find and and also to communicate with a lot of the residents to find out what are some of the things that the residents would like to see that is community-serving to them here so that, you know, we don't have to go out of town so much to go and buy things that we would like. But have somebody who understands market research, who understands what the people here in Palo Alto would like to be able to support and to frequent and to spend their money on. That's the three areas.
Ed, I believe you're the last one in the chain this time.
Okay, so, yes, I think a business tax is is important. We have to do this in a way that's highly communicative, starting to businesses. This is not supposed to be punitive. It's just supposed to be, you know, paying fair share for the infrastructure that that is used. And what what we're having to do to to kind of host them here. So they should need to know, you know, they should know, you know, kind of where it's going. I agree, it shouldn't go in the general fund and we should have a specific specificity around, okay, this three years' worth of business tax is going to be tied up for the next three years, 80% affordable housing and 20% transportation. And it's only an act of God that can change that because we don't want that to be nibbled away. We want it to go for the the strategic projects that are clearly, you know, helping the infrastructure and helping support the business that's there, including transportation, shuttle, TDM, as has already been been mentioned. So there's plenty of of templates for this. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We are one of the few that don't have that. But I want to emphasize, you know, it's not punitive. We're not trying to drive businesses out of town. And it's going to be, you know, progressive in the sense that obviously corporations are going to spend more than maybe the small retailer might not spend any or whatever the number is. In terms of when it should be put back, we still have a lot of big corporations operating in Palo Alto. So, you know, I wouldn't be shy about looking at this again in a year for the for the Teslas of the world, for example. And those folks that, you know, really can afford a few bucks to to help support our town. So this isn't just another tax that like the state does, oh, we can do this, we can do that, you know, we can spend more money, we can give more away. No, it's not. It's very narrowly focused on what is an implication of hosting those businesses. So I think it's it's quite rational, rational and reasonable.
Thank you very much. I think we have time for one more question, Mr. Hurst.
And I do have that question, at least going through to the first initial 90 minutes of our program. The rail crossing grade separation issue is a very important one for many, many Palo Altons. How do you view the process to date? And do you favor one alternative over the others? And this time we'll start with Ed and then Greer and then Lydia. So Ed, you're up first.
Yeah, it I don't know how many years you want me to talk about. It's been going on so long with so many different separate committees. I think overall, in general, I'd say that it's gotten better as we've gone along. The Citizens Committee has been very active, very knowledgeable, very proactive, I should even say. Have gotten up to speed on all the details down to the the safety, the engineering. There's obviously a lot of different opinions by neighborhood, depending on which rail crossing that you're that you're talking about. Another sort of sort of overall global thing that I'd say is that it's probably time for a pause in terms of a go-ahead on that relative to the pandemic and relative to the economics of getting that thing up and running. On top of which, you know, Caltrans has just announced their own study that's about to begin years after we've been studying it and moving along on it. So I don't know why we would not wait until that study is done and that the whole region can can benefit from that. But pretty complicated. There, I think there's high risks of creating the overpasses, which are not going to be pretty in terms of underpasses, which, you know, you don't have to see trains. So I I think it's a little bit too early to talk about specific recommendations, particularly in light of the new study that Caltrans is about to do. But kudos to the citizens that have been working on it and kudos to the citizens that have been talking to Xcap about it because that's been really helpful to the process.
Greer? Greer, you're up second and then Lydia.
Sounds good. I mean, I've been, I I agree with Ed that it's it's clearly time to to have a pause on on this piece. I think that was likely going to happen anyways because this has been pushed back so many times, so many times by by the city. But now with COVID, with the economic problems, with Caltrain's own internal problems with their with how they how they're governed, the problems with the different the different counties, the funding, all of that. I mean, it really is all of all a mess. And it is a time for us to kind of take a step back and I think figure out where's the economy going? Is Caltrain going to be able to get their house in order? And and with the pandemic as well, I mean, are we going to? Are we going to see a future in the next five, 10 years where people are feeling comfortable cramming into trains again or or not? I mean, so many of our regionals regional problems right now are really contingent on what happens in the next few in the next few years. I think that's not only a frustration with Caltrain, but also going back to that RENA question as well, a frustration with when we are projecting growth in in this region, when we have no idea what all this is going to do for our region's growth in the in the in the coming decade. I, as chair of the Midtown Residents Association, I've worked pretty closely with some of the representatives on on the rail committee, trying to figure trying to educate my my neighbors here as far as what are the various alternatives? What is the timeline? It's been amazing how many times I've I've had to tell my residents, hey, this is coming. This is coming up to council. We need to. We need to move on this. And then a few months later saying, actually, never mind, we have another year to 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 figure this out. So I've been involved in a lot of those community discussions within my within my own neighborhood. I think we're too far out right now to obviously, again, choose a particular a particular option. I generally really, I generally tend to think that the hybrid option is going to be the the best approach for for our city. I'm not a fan of the of the viaduct. But so that's where I lean now. But again, so much is up, so much is up in the air. It's it's impossible to, I think, to state one way or the other going forward.
Lydia.
My three years have been involved in planes, trains and automobiles. It's been it's been a very, it's a learning experience. I certainly have learned a lot. With the rail separation, you know, I I kind of put it in two buckets. There is, there is the, you know, there's the rail, the Xcap, you know, the Extended Citizen Advisory Panel, who I have to say, you know, part of the community, community members, amazing group of people who have really vetted out everything looked into different alternatives and done the safety, technical. I mean, they're an amazing group. You know, they continue to work. And I think at this time, because of COVID and because there is less traffic, you know, Caltrain is electrifying no matter what. They've already put up their poles, you know, so it's there. Whether they decrease their services or not due to the ridership is is part of their business plan and their operations plan that they're looking into. But even but the transportation, the public transportation part still has to be moving forward. And it's still a needed necessity when we come out of COVID and and when it's safe to ride public transportation again. So I think that we have to separate the two. There is the continuation of looking on what what is our community needs in order to proceed with what that type of alternative we're going to have here in town. And then there's the other part, which is, you know, governance and so forth. So I think that it's important to continue on with the work that the Xcap is doing and to come to some sort of a some sort of recommendation to council at some point. In in terms of, in terms of what my preference is, you know, I I was born in Hong Kong and I returned there to visit my parents, my mother a lot and family members. And the subway is is just superb. It's it's, you know, there's still use of above the ground, but it's fast, it doesn't take up room. I mean, so at the very beginning of the studies, you know, I was really pro going underground. And along the way, you know, but at the same time, you know, I'm not impacted by the railroad. There are homeowners that live by the railroad that are affected. So, you know, I want to, when the underground method is was taken out of consideration, I want to be supportive of those to, I want it to be fair to everybody who who are going to be affected by whatever method that goes through there. So it's a it's something that we're going to have to decide on when it's presented. And the main thing is to remember that, you know, it has to be fair and less impactful for everybody who lives along the railroad corridor.
Thank you all. I'm going to just step in here for a minute and say we're just about at the 90-minute mark. So there won't be more questions at this point in time. But Terry, I think we'll take over and allow the candidates to have a reasonable amount of time, not too long, to summarize their candidacy for city council. Terry, up to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say we're going to end the question and answer period now, but we will. I wanted to give each of the candidates an opportunity to summarize their campaign and what they hope and what their goals are. And if you have anything you would like to conclude with, you certainly can take this time to do that. So whoever, who would like to go first, Ed or?
So I feel that, you know, in my 30 years here in school systems and, you know, I know the town. I love the town. I think I know what residents want and I share those values. And I think I know what they don't want and I share those values. I've got this combination of, you know, official city experience for the last 10-plus years and a lot of experience in business. So I think that, you know, is a dual-barrel gun to use in terms of the issues that are here because the city is different than business, but, you know, both of them together is, you know, works. I'm really focused on actually getting things done. One of the problems with the A-bag stuff is it isn't even practical. The other night at PTC, I said, you know, if you just do the calculations of what our allocation is likely to be, back of the envelope means in eight years, we need 168 projects of reasonable size. We can't just, you just can't get that done. You can't get it funded. You can't get enough developers to do it under any circumstances. So I want practical solutions. And so I think that that means work at times, you know, quote, across the aisle with people who have whatever kinds of perspectives and say, let's get something done, not nothing done in the next six months on XYZ issues. And I think I've demonstrated that I've been able to do that on commissions and in my other, you know, non my other nonprofit boards that I've been on. So I'm I'm proud of that, you know, because at the end of the day, something comes out the other end that's constructive for citizens. And that's what it's all about. That's why I'm in this. I'm not in this for anything besides continuing my service in Palo Alto and and helping the citizens. That's what I like the best is when I'm talking with citizens. I'll just I'll close with saying that, you know, you can trust me. What I say is what I'm going to do. And that's the only way I know how to do it. And if somebody asks me in a call from a different political perspective than maybe what folks here are saying, I'm going to say the same things. That doesn't mean that I won't do some negotiating and some compromising if we have to. I'm not afraid of the word compromise. I'm a little concerned about the word consensus, but compromise to get things done and get practical things done is okay. So I don't have any hidden agenda. I'm in public service to serve you and not me. And, you know, John Lewis said that the, what does it say? The the march is not over. He's still doing the march on on his way out. So I I I think that's right. Love to have your help in in putting me to work to solve problems for you.
Okay, Greer, you're next.
Great, thank you. And thanks again for the opportunity to to share my message with all of you. And thank you, everybody, for being on this call and and spending your Thursday night with us. I too, you know, want to give a give a brief quote from the late John Lewis, who was buried today. And he wrote an op-ed that appeared in the New York Times. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to read it. But the one line, well, one quote really just kind of popped out of me. And he said, "Ordinary people with extraordinary vision can redeem the soul of America by getting what I call good trouble, necessary trouble. Voting and participating in the democratic democratic process are key. The vote is the most powerful non-violent change agent you have in a democratic society." The vote is the most powerful non-violent change agent you have in a democratic society." And that quote just, it, it really stuck out to me because I think it really, it, it fundamentally, fundamentally explains the importance of, of running for office, of, of being an engaged citizen and of voting. We are, I think this is going to be one of the most influential elections in our city's history. With the pandemic, the economic problems, uh, the social justice issues that are being, that are being focused on as well, all have created this really incredibly important opportunity for us to be able to forge ahead with the city that really reflects our values as, as residents. And then that's what a city, that's what a city council is supposed to do at the end of the day. It is supposed to reflect the values of us, the residents. And, you know, Lydia, she has been, she has been working so hard on behalf of us for the last four years, but she hasn't had a majority at all during the time that she's been in there. And I, I, and I am very optimistic that by giving, by having that majority, that we're going to be able to finally, finally show the values that this city really, um, really, really has. I mean, of, of embracing, of embracing the, the, the natural diversity and the, and the talent and, and the care and the empathy that is within this city. And it just kind of reminds me, a, a student asked me the other day, why do I want to get involved? Why is it that I've dedicated so much of my life to public service? And, and I, I think it all began for me when I was about eight years old and I remember I was walking in downtown Palo Alto with my mother and she, she passed a homeless man on the street and we walked past and she, she stopped, she pulled out her wallet, she gave me $5 and she said, and she said, go give that man some money. And so I did, I, I ran over, I gave the man money. He smiled, he thanked me and I, and I went back to my mom and I asked him, do you know that man? Why did, why did you give him money? And she said, I'll never forget it, she said, "When you have the power to help someone, you have the moral duty to do so." And that's why, that's why I became a teacher and that's why I'm running today. I believe that I have the experience necessary to enact these meaningful changes when it comes to affordable housing, traffic and transportation, environmental issues, and, and forging a future that is really going to be better for us all. And so I, I, if you're, if you've liked what I've said today, I cannot do it alone. I, I need volunteers, I need, I need donations as well. So please visit my website at www.greerstone.com and get involved. I appreciate it. Thanks so much for your time.
Okay, and Lydia?
Thank you. So I just want to say that Palo Alto, we have just reduced our budget by about $40 million. And that's a lot of cutting of community services. It's slashing a lot of much-needed community services for the residents here in Palo Alto. And instead, it has been funding, it will be funding a lot of the capital improvement projects. But, and I think that, I hope that in the last three and a half years that you have seen some of the work that I have done. And while a lot of it has been, i- i- it's continuing, it's not really starting anew because there, there is still the need to rebuild confidence and trust in our city government and returning transparency to all levels of our government. We need to limit the changes of our zoning laws, which favor individual developments at the community's expense. We need to require the true cost of all capital improvement projects to be discussed, including the project funding, the interest and other costs. Soft costs, hard costs, everything needs to be discussed and not brought to us after the fact. We need to also maintain local legislative control by limiting state and regional government organizations' interference into Palo Alto's land use and zoning codes. We need to continue to limit exemptions to developers, business and employers in order, in order to reduce the parking, traffic, pollution and noise. We need to stop subsidizing those. We need to start making them pay for themselves. We need to ensure businesses and employers pay their fair share of all city expenses, including infrastructure costs. We need, and last and most importantly, we need to enlist all the residents in an open and honest discussion regarding the changes and challenges in Palo Alto's future that is going to be coming upon us. And so, so at, at this time, I am asking for your endorsement and your vote. I really believe that we're way beyond crossroads because we need to kind of decide, do we retain our single-family residential areas? Because that's being, uh, that's being challenged and, or do we expand our community-serving businesses? And do we retain our unique character, our village? Or do we change our zoning and land use regulations to allow for severe densification and morph into that large job, urban job center? You know, this is in your hands, in our hands. So I hope that as you move forward, that you will consider all the candidates' voting records, previous statements, including their social media postings and their endorsements, not just the campaign jargon. So please look deep and decide. And lastly, I do want to say that you, this council position is a non-partisan position. And so therefore you will find that I do not have any political party endorsements. I did not get it last time and I do not intend to seek it this time. I believe, and because I am very, I, I'm very pro the natural environment. I did get an early endorsement from the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter and I'm very proud of that. I believe that our tree canopy is one of our most treasured and it's one of the least cheapest form of clean air. So we should really invest in that. And with that, I, I ask you to look and find out more about me at my website, lydia kou.com. Kou is spelled K-O-U. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to take a final word here and that is to thank all of our candidates for their time. As I've said earlier, it is not easy to run for office. It takes real dedication, sincere people who care about the communities like Lydia and, and Greer. I encourage you to find ways to help these candidates, both in their, both in your time and your talents. Please take the time to help these candidates. Go to their websites and find ways to help them. We need them. Finally, I'd like to say thanks to all of you, our residents, because you are the reason PAS exists. PAS appreciates you and will never forget you in whatever we do. With that, we will say good night and blessed to you, all of you. Ed, good night.